Party lines and everything.
All right. Well, being at six o'clock, we'll call the meeting order. We'll start with.
To apply of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can everybody get a chance to look over the agenda? Take a motion to approve.
Take the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yes, I have a second.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Is there any items anybody would like to discuss? If not, I would take a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Paul.
Second.
Thank you, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Thank you. Up next is visitors to the council. Bree Kobly. Well, Kobel. Sorry. Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so this must be on. All right. First of all, thank you for giving me a few minutes tonight. And second of all, thank you. I'm here representing the Karen Share for Cassin Manorville. So second of all, thank you for letting us use the community room at the new fire station last year for our event. We wanted to use it again this year for our event coming up in November. And you know, last year, we kind of worked with Joe Fitch and worked it out of how it was just trying it out. And it worked wonderful. The community, we had a great turnout. People really enjoyed being there. And this year now, I think, you know, you have a rental agreement. And the way that we're using it doesn't quite fall into like what that rental agreement is showing. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure you understood how we wanted to use it and now make sure that was okay with you. And then to make sure that we understood what the cost would be so we can just get it into our budget plan for it. So are all of you familiar with Karen Share? Do you need me to tell you about it? Or I have a little pamphlet if you care. You don't have to.
You could just give a quick.
Okay. So Karen Share has been in the community for a long time. It's part of the Cassin Manorville community. All the funds raised stay in the Cassin Manorville area. We have one major event each year, and it's our dinner and auction. And it's in November. And a lot of the funds go towards the, you know, the Christmas or the holiday season. And so there's families that go through SEMCAC to get like okayed. And gifts are given to children. And then each family gets like gift cards to the local grocery store and QuickTrip or Casey's. But then also throughout the year, it's kind of, it's for residents that kind of maybe fall through the cracks. They don't quite qualify for SEMCAC. So it's like a one time, like they need a rent payment, or they need a car fixed. And they don't like, we don't keep servicing the same families, but they just need a little boost. And so we're there to take care of them. And I mean, I just think it's really cool because it all stays in our community. And like that night, most of the funds are, I mean, the things that come to the auction are donated by people in our community, the people that are there bidding on stuff, or people that are from our community. So it's, you know, it's a pretty cool thing. So that's the whole gist of what we're doing. So anyways, but how it works is we take the donations in the whole day before. And then we set up the day of, and then people come in for a dinner, and then a silence and a live auction that night. So how we did it last year was like the Wednesday before, I sat at the community room. And people just kept, I was there, and there was maybe another one or two people there in and out throughout the day. But I was there the entire day, and people dropped off donations. And I just kept putting them on the tables in the community room. And then someone came from the fire department and locked up for me at the end of the night. And then the next morning, we were there. And people continued to drop off until about 11:00. Then the firemen came, and they moved all the trucks out of the truck bay. And then we set up the tables. And that's where we had the dinner. And so, you know, in the rental agreement, it talks about, you know, you can't use the truck bay. And the firemen, they did the liquor sales, and then they handle all of that, that piece of it. So we would like to do that same setup again this year. So I would, you know, I filled out a rental form, and I think Linda has all that. And we put the deposit down. But you know, if you guys could just consider if we could do that same setup that we did, and then what the, you know, what the charge would be. And here it says fifty dollars an hour. But just know that we would, you know, be having it like almost like two whole days. So that's all I had. Linda has my email if anybody had any questions and any other things that she wanted to ask us. And I think we have the date set so far. So that's all I had. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. There's nothing under Mayor's report, public forum. I got no cards. Public hearing. We'll start with the 2025 Street and Utility Improvements. That'll be for you, Brandon.
Ian, you're going to pull open the presentation. So thank you, Mayor Council. So for the public hearing tonight, 2025 Street Utility Improvement.
Right.
Do we have a presentation put together, consistent with our previous presentations and public hearings? So we'll present that tonight up there. And Ian, I'll just go through that as we go. So what is this hearing tonight? This is ultimately to set the possible special assessments for the project. And ultimately, kind of close out the process of the assessments if we move forward with the 2025 Street Utility assessments. Just as note to some of the property owners, there's a handout in the back there tomorrow, public meeting here at six o'clock at City Hall to talk about the construction aspects. Tonight, we're talking about the assessment. So you guys will mail the handout. So that's tomorrow night. We'll have some of our construction staff here, assuming we move forward tonight with the project. The contractors indicated they'd move forward. So just leave with anything tonight. Construction meeting tomorrow at six o'clock. So just jump into it here. A quick outline. Talk about the project area, what we're looking at for a project. Talk about some background, some work that's been done to date, proposed construction, what we're ultimately proposing to do. Talk about the schedule of the project. Obviously, everybody's interested in cost and the special assessments. And talk about the assessment process, of which is laid out in some mailings and laid out by Minnesota State Statute 429. There's a public hearing. So we would open a public hearing after this presentation to hear written in verbal discussion or objections to the assessment. So that's the outline for what we're going to do tonight. Project area here, kind of hard to see there, but that's a map. Lower right-hand corner is downtown. Cassin to the north is Eighth Avenue off the dump road that's kind of in the center of the sheet. That's Schedule B I'll be referring to. And then kind of jumping back to downtown, the west part of downtown, Second and Third Avenue from Main Street to the railroad tracks. That area is kind of the lower right there. That's Schedule A when we talk through the portions of the project tonight. So that's what we're looking at for scope of project. Quick background, the special assessment process is kind of lengthy, and it takes a lot of steps to kind of get to this point that we've got tonight to kind of wrap things up. So feasibility report was presented to the council last fall to talk about a potential project. This is a 2025 Street Utility Improvement project. What that feasibility report noted was that the existing streets in the project area in fair to poor condition. The water main in Schedule A, kind of the downtown project, was presumed to be in good condition and talking with public work staff. They haven't had a lot of water main breaks in areas, so that's not really part of the project. No storm sewers present in Schedule A. We've referred it to as Lake Cassin, where the water sits by the railroad tracks there. So it's been a deficiency that we wanted to address in that feasibility report. Jumping over to Schedule B, the water main has been problematic from public works. It's actually their number one priority for water projects to get done due to the number of water main breaks. So that was noted in the report. And then the sanitary sewer in Schedule B was presumed to be in good condition. Again, talking with that out with staff. Storm sewer is also in Schedule B, is ultimately conveyed to Eighth to the North 12th Street Northwest intersection. So that was the background that was discussed on that feasibility report. What was proposed ultimately in Schedule A, again, the downtown area, Second and Third Avenue, southwest from Main Street to the railroad tracks, was reclaim and pave where we grind up that existing asphalt surface, and then repave the street on top of it, kind of leaving the base. It's been in good shape. It's been there a while. So it's really lasted. Replace deteriorating sections of curb and gutter. And then, like I said, the water main will just adjust the gate valves where we shut the water main off to the road surface. Install some more storm sewer catch basins at the low point on the north side of the railroad tracks. It's been a cause of a lot of the pavement deteriorating. That water sits in that hole in there, doesn't drain out. So we do have a storm sewer proposed as part of the project. And then repair the sidewalk as needed to maintain a safe walkway. So that's included in the project. And then replacement of pedestrian ramps that are not ADA compliant. So that's Schedule A. And again, I'm referring this, the 2025 Street Utility Project is a lot larger project. We have some trails involved. We have the pump outs at Main Street that's not being assessed. So that's a separate part of the project. But we're not talking about that necessarily tonight as associated with this discussion with the assessment. So Schedule B, again, that's Eighth Street Northwest. We're looking at replacement of the roadway surface, replacement sections of curb and gutter if we have low points, or when we replace the water main if we disturb them. And then replacing the water main with an eight-inch PVC main. The current water main is ductile iron, which has been problematic when we get in certain clay soils, which we suspect we have here. So we're going to convert that to PVC. Should last a lot longer than the water main that's currently in place. And the replacement of existing water services to each individual house in the project area. So that's Schedule B. Project schedule, looking forward tonight, where final assessment hearing is tonight. There is a potential consideration after the public hearing to award the construction project after the assessments are considered. So that is on the agenda tonight. And then a construction open house again tomorrow. Contractors are hungry at work. We got some good bids here that we'll see. So they're looking at starting right away on the 19th, assuming the council awards a contract tonight. And then begin construction is not on Friday. That'll be next Monday. And we do have a fall completion for the project. So cost, so we first had a preliminary, which is showing up on the top there, kind of crossed out. We did the feasibility report. You know, we don't have final engineered documents yet. We have a concept of a project, and we do our best to get those costs. But ultimately, they are preliminary. We have to finish the engineering, go out for bids, get the bids, and then kind of reevaluate. So that's what we're here tonight to talk about. And that's shown in bold in the current. So what that ultimately kind of shakes out is there's some shifting of the assessments amount based on the actual bid cost that you're going to consider tonight. So assessment policy is 30% of the total roadway cost. So you can see in the preliminary, we had about $37,320 that we were going to assess to the benefiting property owners based on a per-foot basis. Again, this is Schedule A in the downtown area. You can see that that's gone up some. So it's 6882 now per foot is what we're looking at, because it did go up about $3,000 in project costs. So corner lots will be assessed on 100% per front foot and 50% per side foot. Just a note, and this was sent to the property owners, there's a senior deferral. So if there's any seniors that are interested in that, come talk to Linda at City Hall, because it is available to seniors. And then if the assessments are approved, prepaid by November 15th of 2025, or that assessment will appear on your 2026 taxes with the proposed interest rate. We were talking not only this project, but previous projects that we've approved this year of a 9% interest rate. Previous council action reduced that to 5.5. So that's what we've proposed to kind of make both projects the same. So that's what we've put in there for the notice to the property owners. And we have that out over 15 years to be consistent with other projects. So a slight increase in Schedule A. And then if Ian keeps going there, we'll show you kind of how that was all broken down. So these maps and rolls were ultimately set to the property owners as part of their notification tonight. So that shows the front footage. It's kind of hard to see there. But basically, the project area is in red. And you can see we have property owners that are budding it. And then we have the distances shown along the front edge of the property, because we are assessing that on a per-front-foot basis. So if we keep going there, you can see the assessment roll. Again, we take that $40,000, which is 30% of the roadway cost. We break that down to the properties that are benefiting. And then we just come up with the assessment roll, showing the footage for each individual property, all taking it by the assessment rate and coming up with the proposed assessment. Again, these rolls were sent to the property owners as part of their notification. I did note one property there, we did acquire an easement to run the storm sewer through her property out to our Main Street. So part of that previous agreement with the council was that we were going to ultimately pick up her assessment or not charge her for the assessment. The Storm Water Fund would take care of that. I think that's roughly $9,000 for that property, because it wasn't a utility easement that ultimately is an encumbrance on that property. So we thank her for that. It worked out well to make the project more efficient. But we encumber the property. So that was what the council previously agreed to. So that's Schedule A. Again, that's the downtown area, Second and Third Avenue. Moving on to Schedule B, this is Eighth Avenue Northwest. We assessed it a little bit different, more traditional way when a residential neighborhood, similar to our Southwest project. We assessed that residential equivalent unit. A house is a house. If we don't really look at if it's corner or a larger lot or a flag lot, we can just say, everybody's in this neighborhood together. How do we, how do we make it equitable for everybody? Now with that said, Eighth is pretty uniform. And it's the newest subdivision. So they're all kind of the same sized lots. So we had 32 residential equivalent units. That did not change. Similarly, to Schedule A, Schedule B changed, went in less cost. We have less assessment there. So it went from about $148,000 of assessment to about $138,000, which again was 30% of that total roadway cost. Again, breaking that down per residential equivalent unit ends up about $21,600. That's actually should be half residential equivalent unit, not a tenth. And then $4,302 for one REU. And similarly, we have senior deferral if needed. And we have the same kind of terms that we talked about in Schedule A. So where's the half residential equivalent unit coming? If we go and show the map there, past council direction and policy's been any corner lot. When there's a project proposed on the one side of the lot, they get a half. When a project comes through on the other side of the lot, they would take the other half at that time or be assessed at that time. So we do have a couple of corner lots there. So that reflected through on the proposed assessment roll on the next sheet. So same thing there, total cost of $138,616, 32 residential equivalent units developed the roll. That's what the numbers show there. Again, $4,332 for one REU and $2,166 for a half REU for any corner lots for the, I think there's four corner lots there. So again, this roll is sent to the property owners as part of their notice, as required to the 429 special assessment process. So talk more about the 429 process on the next slide. This is set by state statute. So there is an appeal process. So any written objections from property owners should be considered by the city council tonight, with again, your likelihood of adjusting, if needed, the assessment roll and potentially approving this. And then within 30 days after adoptions to the assessment, owner may appeal to the district court by serving notice upon the mayor and clerk. Clerk shall furnish appellant the certified copy if there is an objection filed at the court level. And then we could potentially negotiate the assessment, which has been, has been done on certain projects, but ultimately can end up in court, which has been done on other projects too. So you can see there what that process would look like if we get to that point. And again, that's all set by Minnesota State Statute 429. So at this point, Mayor, that's the presentation. There's a project we've been looking at, you know, since this fall. We did the report, had the preliminary assessment hearing to talk about thumbs up, thumbs down the project. We thumbed it up. We proceeded through design, through bidding. We got the bids. Now's the time to potentially set the assessments as you as council select to. And again, as a public hearing, so I'd ask you, Mayor, to open that up and take public hearing, either at the podium or written comments, too.
Okay. At this time, I will open up the public hearing for assessment hearing on this project. If anybody has anything they'd like to say, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening.
My name is Stephen Dean, 903 Eighth Street Northwest. And basically, my question is kind of regarding tomorrow's open house. Unfortunately, my wife and I are unable to attend that. So I'm wondering if, what information, I mean, were they going to have stuff that we're going to be able to hand out or anything like that? If so, will there be some way of obtaining it other than, or do we just have to contact the construction foreman representative person and find out just how to, what sort of, you know, because I'd like to know better about what the timeline's going to be, certain other questions. Where's my mail going to go? Where's my garbage going to go? All that sort of stuff. So.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Please.
So yeah, just to answer high-level construction, because it is not a construction meeting. But to your point, if you're missing, I'm happy to share that with you. So mail will be brought by the contractor. I'm sorry. The garbage will be, will be brought from your houses at the end of the driveway to a collection point. That's a contractor responsibility. They're going to be setting up a mailbox bank for your mail at one end of the project or the other. And then in the construction handout, if you have other construction questions, our construction observer's cell phone on there, call, it's going to be Kyle Benson. Give him a call. And you can talk about any construction at that, with him directly. And I will tell everybody also, probably don't call City Hall first, call the construction observer. Construction is changing all the time. It's messy. Council and staff, even myself, don't know what they're doing. So call our construction observer or call the contractor's number that's on there. They'll know firsthand. If you can't get in, if you got a special request, whatever that may be, you guys are paying as citizens our company to have an observer there to take care of your construction needs and wants as best we can. So use that service and use Kyle as a resource.
That's Mr. Brandbold, I think.
Yep, Brandbold's on there, too. He's also for the contractors. So either one, they're both people that work to get you guys in and out. So.
Will you be setting up email?
Yeah. So there is also on the city website, we're not, we're not necessarily sending out email updates. We're putting on the city website, and that's linked on the handout, too. And it's right on the city website, if you go there. For all of our projects, there's construction updates weekly that go up there. Linda puts them up there as the clerk to say this week, we're doing this. Next week, we're this. We're going to be on your streets, those sort of things. Just to update you guys to keep you guys informed. So we will be closing the road. We will be pouring concrete driveway, and that needs a setup before we can get out. So it's going to be, it's going to be messy. It is a long stretch. So hopefully, we can work towards it, and you can get out one way, then get by and come out the other way is kind of the idea and open it up at night. So.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up? Did we get any written comments?
No.
No?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no more public comment, no written comment, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion from council or staff? Okay. Hearing none. I would take a motion to approve, to adopt the resolution to adopt assessments.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a motion to approve this. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Aye.
Okay. You got Linda? Okay. Thank you. And then next, the bids?
Yep, which would be a resolution to award the contract. So in your council packet is a resolution to award the 2025 Street Utility Improvements. We did receive bids there. You can see our engineering estimate is about 1.7. Hazleton Construction was 1.419 $287,064 there. Had a strong bidding environment. Contractors have been kind of hungry for work, so it was good. It's been different than the last couple of years. So we've been seeing some good bids. So therefore, if you approve this resolution, authorize, sit the mayor and the administrators, sign the construction contract. And if you move forward, the contractors are ready to go and starting on Monday. So.
Thank you. Any questions for Brandon? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the resolution awarding and approving the bid for 2025 Street and Utility Improvements for the Hazleton Construction Company.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mel. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next, committee report, planning commission, Oscar Meadows' second subdivision variance.
All right. I'll just give a background of this one to start things off tonight. So this one has to do with Oscar Meadows' second subdivision, the second phase of the Oscar Meadows subdivision. You'll recall back to our March meeting when the council conditionally approved the preliminary plat for this one. The condition that came out of that meeting was that several of the lots would have to be resized due to their being smaller than the 8,000 square foot minimum lot size as required by our city code. So since that time, the applicant, Bigelow Homes, has come back to the city with a proposal for a subdivision variance instead. Now, the subdivision variance is to reduce the right-of-way of two different streets. So there's 14 and a half Street Northwest up there and fifteenth, sorry, 14 and a half Street Northwest right there and 15th Street up there. Yes. So the right-of-way proposed to be reduced for those two. So standard for that is 66 feet across the city for streets like this. And what's being proposed is a right-of-way is 60 feet instead. Now, that doesn't mean that the actual driving lane would be smaller or anything like that. What's actually being proposed, you can see better here on this exhibit, the proposal is to reduce the amount of boulevard down from eight and a half feet to five and a half feet. So that would be the distance between the sidewalk and the curb. But like I said, the driving lane could stay the same, the curb and gutter could stay the same, and the sidewalk itself could stay the same. So just that distance between the sidewalk and the curb is proposed to be smaller. With subdivision variances, there are a number of criteria that we look at, compatibility with the comprehensive plan and city code, and potential impacts to public health and all of that. And additionally, is special circumstances. Now, in this case, there's a number of easements and wetlands and right-of-ways that reduce the amount of buildable area that's available for development. So this was a proposal for 41 single-family homes. That's still what's being proposed, even with the subdivision variance. But I can just go through each of the easements briefly here. The east and west sides both have sanitary sewer easements. The south side has the gas line easement. And then the north side has a power line easement and 16th Street Northwest as well. So if you look at the exhibit on the screen, the green line is, inside the green line is the developable area. And then the next green line outside of that is the actual outlot B that's being considered for the subdivision. And then over here, you can see the, the other texture there is a wetland as well, which reduces the amount of developable area. So staff did review this and recommended approval of the subdivision variance. We thought that there was sufficient reason to grant it. The public hearing was held at the planning commission meeting on Monday evening. There was quite a lot of discussion about this and different things that could be done. There was some discussion on whether we want to potentially consider changing the ordinance itself. So we could either change the minimum lot size standard from 8,000 square feet, or we could potentially change the right-of-way distance from 66 feet down to 60 feet or some other number. Just a couple of options there if the subdivision variance wouldn't want to be considered further. However, I just wanted to point out with that, if the city were to consider changing the ordinance, we would have to have a public hearing before council approval. And so that would take some time, of course, to do all of that. I also wanted to point out that there is the 60-day rule for this one, which expires on June 3rd. However, the city does have the opportunity to extend it by an additional 60 days. And that's just an administrative decision. There's no special city council action order to extend it by an additional 60 days. So there could be an option to leave it tabled as the planning commission decided, have a discussion about lot sizes or right-of-ways before that additional 60-day extension could expire. But let's see, that's, that's pretty much what I, what I have. If there's any questions from the board.
If, if it was to change to go to the, the smaller, right-of-way, the smaller boulevard, would there be a limit in, you know, if it passed, would there be a limit to plant no trees in the boulevard in that area? Or would that not affect anything, being it three feet less?
That was, that was one thing that we had discussed as well, as one of the conditions. Instead of the eight and a half foot boulevard distance and putting a five and a half foot boulevard distance instead, I mean, we talked about not allowing trees to be planted in there instead. Now, depending upon the type of tree that you plant there, I think maybe there are certain varieties that could work with a five and a half foot boulevard. It's not like it would be like right on top of utilities or anything like that, because those are placed on the other side of the sidewalk, not in the boulevard area typically.
Well, I was curious, you know, if it got to be too big, if it started
Oh, too big.
... panicking out over the road. That's why I was, would it be a site issue? That the only, you know, unless it was a limited-sized tree, but.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
But that was a conversation that P&amp;G did have. So I mean, there are some concerns about trees, definitely. Something that was, was.
Yeah, I think it just depends on the variety that you go with.
Did you say the road was going from 65 or 60 feet, or just the boulevard shrinking?
So the right-of-way. So the road itself would not be changing its width, but the the distance from property line to property line across the street would be.
Okay. I was just thinking about parking.
Sure. No. So parking wouldn't be affected.
That wouldn't be affected.
No, it would impact parking or anything like that.
So the right-of-way, so the road itself would not be changing its width, but the distance from property line to property line across the street would be.
Okay, I was just thinking about parking.
Sure. No, so parking wouldn't be affected.
That wouldn't be affected.
No, it wouldn't affect parking or anything like that.
So we talked about this earlier, but just for clarification for the public, because it was something I wasn't quite clear on. What we're talking about is the green space between the sidewalk and the curb itself.
That's right.
Paul, what were the concerns at planning and zoning, other than it's a variance?
Mostly it's a variance. Nobody on the board and I don't think anybody at city staff could come up an example where we've approved a subdivision variance before. So we kind of, I don't think anybody necessarily had a problem with what they're asking for. But rather than approve a variance, we would rather, let's do some digging in and see if this is acceptable for these streets. Maybe we should just make it acceptable across the whole city and then we don't need a variance at all.
So by, when you say making it acceptable across the city, are you talking about reducing lot size or reducing the green space between the sidewalk and the boulevard? Sidewalk and the curb?
Yeah, from, I think the direction was is that we would look at both and maybe weigh the pros and cons of what we might think would be the best route. Is that away from it?
Yeah, I mean, I think, no. The one issue that came up with narrowing that right-of-way is the snow storage component, which, and the tree storage, you know, or trees that would be grown there. So I think the, from what I heard, the direction might be to look at both of them, but also, you know, the 7,500 or, you know, as the council's aware, the state's been talking about those minimum lot sizes quite a bit this year at the legislature. So it seemed like it might be a timely thing to take a look at the city code and perhaps adjust that in lieu of reducing the street right-of-way down. That would make it a little bit easier for the subdivision and for a normal subdivision going forward. We know that the state's been guiding us towards that, a smaller amount.
What was it that the state was trying to work with the suggestion this year?
I think their requirement was going to be 6,000, I think, was what it was, which is narrowed than we would maybe guide it towards, but yeah.
The concern I have is this subdivision's been discussed for a while. And if we, I have no objection to looking at change in ordinance, but I don't think now would be the time. We can still approve this with the variance. Otherwise, we're gonna delay this project two to three months and that might be an end for all for the project. I don't know, I can't say that, but if we delay growth because we didn't want to issue a variance that fits all the standards, that's where I have an issue. So I would like to look at changing the variance for this one, but then looking at change, going back to planning zoning and looking at the ordinance of lot size and the right-of-way.
Mr. Bigelow's here, I don't know if we have any questions for him about the schedule or timeliness or if it's causing any issues to have delayed by a month?
Well, be more than a month.
Potentially, yeah. With public hearings and things.
Yeah.
Tony Bigelow, Bigelow Homes. Hi. You know, the schedule is always important because of our shorter construction seasons with winter. I mean, time is money. You go borrow the money, you sit until next year to start something. So it is important that we get started. It's not important that we start tomorrow. We're working on phase one right now, as you guys probably know. And I just appreciate all of you looking at this and in the future, I, there's a lot of roadways and right-of-way widths that we use in Rochester. We're not Rochester here and that's fine. But a 60-foot is a pretty common one. I don't know if they have problems with snow storage. I don't think they do. And they do have boulevard trees on those. But as far as time, yeah, time means a lot. Typically, this is a 20-acre, phase two is 20 acres, phase one was 20 acres. I'm getting 41 lots. Typically, I'd have, get 60 lots, but with the wetlands and the 16th Street and the large gas easement, we're getting a lot less. And that's fine, we knew that when we bought the land. But, yeah, the schedule is important.
Are there any other, can you think of any other subdivisions in town that have this kind of geographic or topographic limitation? Between the wetlands, the gas line, the street?
In my experience, I haven't encountered one quite like this.
So it pretty much, it is a unique situation?
I would say so, yes.
I mean, I recognize that we've never done one before, but it is a unique issue to this property. And I'm with you, I mean, I think we do need to look at potentially changing the code. Mel, as far as presidential value? If we were to do a variance for this property and then subsequently change the code, does that somewhat lessen the ability for folks down the line to say, well, you did it there? I mean, I guess if we were to change the minimum lot down to 7,500, then that negates the whole thing anyway.
Makes their, you know, takes away their argument essentially, but.
Okay. Sorry, that was not a very articulate.
Not a good answer either, so.
I think with each situation one of the variants comes, I always think if there's no, I don't like to look at precedents because every situation's different. So that's, I don't look at a past precedence or future precedence. I look at each situation individually. It's a fair request to get this development going and moving. I don't think the homeowners are gonna notice a big difference. If we do in the future change this ordinance, I would also suggest we reach out to our parks department about what boulevard trees can be allowed just to adjust that because we have a list now, we have programs now, but maybe that needs to be adjusted if we're gonna change those things.
Well, that process I had was, you know, if we can pursue this to keep Mr. Bigelow on his schedule and if we did decide to make those adjustments, say the 7,500 square foot within the next month or two, he really won't need the variance anymore. You know, I mean, realistically, that would allow you to have the same plan that you have right now, because I'd prefer to have a little bit wider right-of-way. To me, the better solution is to reduce it to 7,500, you know, but obviously something for P&amp;Z to talk about. But I mean, I guess, is that, is that something that's gonna be a problem for you if it's 60 days or? I mean, plans aren't done yet. I don't know what Les' schedule is for that or whatnot. I think, I want to keep them on track, but I also, like you said, don't want to set something that, but I mean, I feel like if we're keeping them on track schedule-wise and then we alleviate the need for that variance, it really isn't gonna affect anything in the future.
Tim?
Tim, it'll just affect the plans now that are being passed.
Sure.
I don't know how far Brandon is along in reviewing them, if even at all.
No, we just got them submitted, so.
Yeah. So if it's 60 days later, yeah, that's pretty significant, but I mean, I would understand, you know.
I was gonna say, if staff gets the materials together, could we always just call an extra P&amp;Z meeting early to try and fast-track it?
Yeah, I mean, the issue is across the publication for hearings. So there's always that 10-day notice, you know, which ends up being like a three-week notice because it has to publish in the newspaper and that's a week ahead. So, I mean, realistically, you know, one thing we could look at is if the council feels like this might be a solution, we could try to set the public hearing for the first meeting in June. You know, for your meeting in June, even though, you know, maybe accelerating that conversation, but you'd have the required hearing out of the way. We'd have your discussion at that meeting then. And then, you know, presumably, if you have a favorable result, we'd be able to move it forward at that time and then bring it to council in June still. I don't know if that's a compromise, maybe?
I don't think that would hurt my schedule. We only have one meeting in June.
Right.
We only have one meeting in June.
Sure, but this, I don't think that would be a problem. I mean, what we'd end up doing is P&amp;Z would still have their meeting second Monday of, right, second Monday of June, which was, what day is that?
The ninth.
The ninth, and then, you know, council's on the 18th. So I mean, you know, and I think, you know, from the conversation I'm hearing from you all, like, if P&amp;Z says this is something we feel is appropriate, that you're always, you know, of course, the council takes that into account when they make their decision-making process. So, I mean, I think at the same time, we don't want to ignore what P&amp;Z said, which is that they wanted to table it. They felt like, you know, it was, and hopefully we'd have a few more P&amp;Z members available for more feedback as well. Can't guarantee that, but. I mean, if that works for you, Tony?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tim, could you express your concerns about the right-of-way being reduced?
Well, I just, you know, every city has a little different, you know, and I've seen it, you know, in previous cities I've worked in where they've had, you know, major arterials are 80 and 60 for the smaller streets in the city. However, a lot of times those didn't have sidewalks. So I mean, if they did have sidewalks here, you know, you kind of alleviate, we are having sidewalks in this. So I mean, I do think that, so, but, you know, at the end of the day, every city's got a little different. So I mean, I don't have a major concern either way. I just want to make sure that we don't discourage a responsible developer who's working with us on the 16th Street Road Extension Two. That's something that I don't want to forget because I know it's a big part of our overall street network in the city as well, so.
Would this impact future, not development, but if we are redeveloping an area that has a wider boulevard, could they shrink it down then?
And that's something I've taken a look at. A good example would be 7th Street Northeast. So that is a street, you know, and kind of, you know, west you go over to the Veterans Park and east you're going kind of at that, it's that offset road. And that's a road that I know a ton of people walk on. Currently doesn't have any sidewalks at all. I mean, it's odd because the first, I don't know, four blocks of it doesn't have any sidewalks. And there's a single block on Fifth, once you get past Fifth, that does have sidewalk and then it dies off again. So, I mean, that would be one where if I think we were rebuilding that one, myself, I would encourage us to take a look, at least putting a sidewalk on one side of that or another. And that might require you to narrow up the driving lane a little bit. So, I mean, that would be a good example to what you're talking about on a redevelopment where we'd say, safety is a paramount concern. We want to be able to provide connectivity to that area of town too.
Did anyone come to the public hearing on Monday?
I don't believe so.
On this one, it was just Les who spoke.
It was the engineer for.
Yes.
But no public member?
We're taking members of the public, no.
Not for this one, no, no.
So we, the plan is to call a public hearing?
Well, so I think if that makes sense, to me, what I'm hearing is that we want to have some more conversation, but we want to stay on schedule. So why don't we call a public hearing for a zoning ordinance amendment? We'd have the public hearing, whether we choose to execute it that day or not. That gives the P&amp;Z chance to discuss the two things, which is road right-of-way widths, the lot sizes. That can help keep Mr. Bigelow and his engineering group on track for their schedule and then we can bring that back to council in June for a final, maybe decision? Is that worth it? On the 18th? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's Oscar Meadows'. Next is Cassin Crossing.
All right, so this one has to do with a proposed expansion of the Windsor Court Manufactured Home Community. It's on property that's currently owned by the city of Cassin. Just directly south of the existing Windsor Court and the cemetery is over there too. The city previously plotted this one to create three different lots, one, two, and three. So this would be on the entirety of Lot Two in the middle there. So this one is a proposal for 87 new manufactured homes to be constructed. The street network is proposed to be entirely private, but it does connect to the existing Windsor Court in two different locations. One over here and then one over here in the northwest corner, which is also where the proposed location of the community room and storm shelter area is. And so with all of this, since the property is currently zoned for development holding, the preliminary PUD effectively rezones the property, so it allows the development to move forward. This is just a preliminary version, however, so a final PUD would have to be applied for and approved by the city. But I'll just go through each of the exhibits here. So these just show some greater detail, more up close. You can see some of the measurements in there. These streets, since they are private, they can be smaller. However, they would be in line with the city code and the section that describes manufactured home communities. Let's see. Yeah, so just some closer details on how that would all look. Let's see here. The actual road width would be 15 feet per lane, so 30, 30 feet from curb to curb, I guess. And this one here shows the proposed layout for the public water main. So extending from the southern portion of Manorville Avenue over here, this gray line, the proposed water main line would go across the southern edge. This, there's another lot over here currently owned by Carter Blaine and others. But staff's understanding is that the applicant for this one, the Windsor Court folks, do have a purchase agreement in place that goes into effect should the city finally approve everything. So that would allow the water main to be extended across that southern edge there and then into the actual manufactured home community. And then, we did ask the applicant to construct it so that in the future, that water main would be able to be connected into development going to the, to the south. So you can see that there. This is the proposed private water main network, so you can see it just kind of connects to where that public area would come in and then just extend throughout the rest of the property to provide water to the homes there. And this one here is the proposed sanitary sewer network. You can see the layout there, extending out and back, back here, proposed that way, yes, that way, good. And this one here is a lighting plan and this is a landscaping plan. So you can see what's been proposed, just has some rows of trees up along the north edge and the east edge. Kind of to provide a little bit of separation there and then along this other northwest edge. Yeah, for separation mostly. Uh, let's see, and that's that, that's that. This one here just kind of gives a greater overview of how this will look in the future. So I had mentioned the three different lots that the city created, one, two, and three, two right there in the middle. Staff had also discussed a future city park, which would be located down here at that southern, southwestern corner of what the new subdivision would be. That's a one-acre rectangle for scale there. And then it could be expanded in the future by an additional acre or more, depending on what the needs are at the time. And then this would be a proposed trail connecting from the park to the cemetery. And then that would ultimately lead out to Southern Manorville Avenue as that trail network gets extended out there. So that's all of that. Staff reviewed it. A lot of the comments came from the city engineer generally. A lot of the exhibits are lacking detail, especially ones having to do with water main and sewer main and all of that. Just, we need more information for the final version when that comes through. Let's see. And then with this one, there were a couple of different recommendations. Staff did recommend approval of this one. I'll just go through those here, so three of them. The first one says that the manufactured home community should comply with that section of the code that I referenced that talks about manufactured home communities, those standards. Number two is a maintenance agreement for the private streets. That's pretty standard for PUDs. And number three is that the applicant should address those comments from staff and consultants when they come back for the final PUDs in the middle. So that's pretty much everything there with that one. If there's any questions from the board?
Oh, I do have one question, sorry, Mel.
Oh, you're fine.
On the private streets, will they have no parking, being it's narrow?
I think that was the indications we had, where's that they're anticipating that they'll be able to park two cars on the driveway and additionally have a one-and-a-half-car garage. So I think that was kind of what you indicated, wasn't it, Mr. Schrader?
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure, so will you try to get through there with fire or
Sure.
some other need and you can't get through, that's why.
Correct, it's a street party.
Okay.
So there's two streets that come in and out of this development that connect up to the two exits from, or entrance and exits from Windsor Court?
That's right. If you look on that, Ian's kind of got highlighted there, you see there's one kind of in the eastern sort of central section there and then one would be coming continuation of that road that comes off the end of their current subdivision, up on the northwest part of that.
Is that really bottlenecking everyone into one space? Sorry, my throat really hurts.
Well, we currently have two accesses, so, I mean, obviously, you know, we don't know exactly how it'll operate. But, I mean, subdivision of this size, we want to have at least two accesses. And they do have the two accesses we're requesting. Currently, they have a potential access to the south as well. I think that's something we'll take a look at in the final design and see if that's something that we want to continue or if it can be, could be changed slightly.
But there's no potential for an additional ingress or egress to the west?
Well, at this time, you know, we're anticipating having that trail that goes north-south, maybe go to that. Maybe go to that, Ian, too, and show them how that would look here. Yeah. So that hasn't been something we've been considering. Right now, we're looking at that trail that would run from the cemetery south to the park access there. You know, as part of a final PUD, certainly, if those are revisions we want to see, that's something we could take a look at. You know, we're anticipating that that western section will have a road coming off the north side, go through, and then it'll have a west exit off onto the, what's now the township road. But I don't, you know, without having a final design for that, I don't know exactly what it'll look like. And I would be hesitant to pigeonhole anyone, you know, in terms of design, like, you know, putting a road to it and deadening it, but we could take a look at it.
And I, I understand that. I just, that's a, that's an awful lot of residential units going through two entrances and exits between the two, the trailer park and the manufactured home community.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would look at Casson Meadows, which has more on two exits. So I mean, not to say there are quite a few, but it's similar to that in terms of scope.
Brandon, what did you want? More information on the water, on their, the interior portion of it, you said?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any concerns. It's just stuff that we'll have to work through. We did have, myself in the, fire chief did have a comment about running water main, city-owned water main and maintained water main with hydrants through the center of the subdivision to provide fire access. So those are details we'll work out with the, with the developer and the developer's engineer. So we'll have to work on that, probably a little different than what it shows in this preliminary, but things that we'll work through with the fire chief as we move forward. So not, not much of a concern there, because we told the developer that from day one. That's been our standard. So I understand the developer's willing to work with us and get that figured out. So I will just note, since, kind of have the mic here, road width, they're proposing thirty feet from like the lip of the asphalt to the lip of the asphalt and thirty-five feet or thirty-six feet even, back a curb, back a curb. And that's our current city spec. So I think parking in here could be accommodated and we'll work with them on final design at a minimum one side of the road. So I don't think that's, that's much of an issue. So, and as Mr. Bigelow mentioned, you know, like even the city of Rochester, they're trying to narrow a lot of their public streets, way less than what they show here. So I think we can work with them at least parking on one side. So there might be a reason to even narrow it up some more if we have parking on one side, if that, if the developer chooses to do that. We will be looking to the point of the fire hydrants, making sure we have a fire lane at a minimum to provide fire access. Because to Councilwoman Ferris' point is it's, you know, it's going to be a long kind of drive back on public streets to get back there if there's a fire in this backside, so.
That's my concern.
Sure, no, it makes sense.
Certain codes will make sure we follow it. So other than that, I don't have some concerns, you know, just so everybody understands, it's a preliminary PUD. Developer needs to know that we're good before he continues invest time. Generally, the concept's there, and I think it works from an engineering standpoint. We're just going to add more details and get to the final PUD, so.
One thing that came up at the public hearing was the folks to the south there, Mr. Hanson. He owns the fire line. He had some concerns about drainage tile. So I know that he came in and dropped off. Did, do you have copies of that Mr. Schrader can have tonight? Or did you get that from him in an email, Mike?
A representative already came and picked them up.
Okay.
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Hanson. I've also been in touch with Hodgman and Lincoln, the two companies that have done the tiling. So we're investigating that to see what was necessary.
Sure. And I know, I don't know, if you don't mind, Mr. Schrader, just highlighting, you talked pretty eloquently about the type of product you're looking at here. And, you know, there was a question about that, and I think maybe you could just go through that again, what you're looking at here. You're looking at the shared garages and the driveways and then just kind of go through that a little bit more for the council.
Sure, in the initial presentation, we laid out exactly what each of these. There will be mostly coupled home sites where there will be a shared garage, which would accommodate at least a car and a half, about a car, a car and a half, and then two parking pads, driveway. All of the homes will be multi-section HUDCO homes, so two section homes either placed at end elevation or front elevation. There'll be patios and it, so there'll be no single section homes in the, in this expansion area.
I just want to be clear, you know, people ask about what are we looking at? And, you know, we may say, you know, it's going to be attached to Windsor Court, but there will be some, some differences there. So we're aware of that, so.
We are going to be integrating the office and community center. The existing office will go away and that will just be the maintenance location. So I think that our existing residents will benefit from a really well-planned new office and community center and also some enhanced hardscapes and landscape areas that we would, we want to detail that would provide additional screening from, from the cemetery area and greenscapes for when they enter.
Thank you. So any other questions? Nothing from P and Z?
Nope, nothing to add.
All right, with that, I would take a motion to approve the resolution for the preliminary PUD for the Casson Crossing.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Ryan. Motion to waive a second?
I'll sign it.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Next, we got old business, salary study comparables.
Sure, just want to get this in front of you. These are the cities that we're currently looking at for that pay study that was, compensation study that was requested. So, and, you know, we can add other cities in, we can remove some. We wanted to make sure that you're aware of the ones so that we're kind of, we tried to focus on ones that we, we see as comparables, whether it's electric, some of them in the southeast, there aren't a huge number in the southeast, and they tend to be a little bit smaller, so. But if there's any other cities you'd like us to add, right now you can let me know or certainly email Linda. She's been communication. We've met a couple of times with the folks from David Drowned and they're formulating. We just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of the pool we're looking at for comparables.
So you're looking at some cities that are double our population?
Well, I mean, you know, some of them in the southeast, and that was kind of a concern too, is we wanted them to be in the southeast. So, I mean, you have some like Red Wing and Northfield that are bigger, but they're also in the southeast. And of course, you've got some that are half the size of the city as well, Pine Island and Zimbrotta. So if you look at that average population, it's eight thousand six.
Okay.
That doesn't include Casson itself, so I mean, that, I think the average compensation pool would be, would be, you know, would be pretty good. But once again, you know, we can pull some of these out too if people want to remove them.
Well, I'm just really concerned on some of them, if they're two and a half size of us.
Sure.
Their, their budgetary item might be higher and more easy accessible for wages versus ours.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, I mean, we, we try to bring in a, a sort of a different set. I mean, like I said, we have smaller and we have larger. It's hard for me if we eliminate all the ones that aren't exactly our size.
Oh, I agree.
With Wake Park and Delano, and that'll pretty much be it.
That's comparable.
Which I don't know what that'll look like. You know, it might be good, it might be bad, I don't know. But we try to get the averages and that's, that's kind of why we've done what we've done. But like I said, it's up to the council. That's why we're bringing it to you today to see it. Because I don't want anybody to be surprised when they come back and say, these were the cities we used, so. And for electric, there aren't, not every municipal has an electric. You know, we don't have our PU in there because, you know, we don't see that as a comparable realistically, so. Any cities anyone would like us to add tonight? Otherwise, like I said, you can always email Linda and we can. It's, we've talked to them a couple of times and they're very good to work with. And they've got a list of a lot of the cities they work for that have, you know, so they have the data for it already. So it's not overly difficult for them to throw it in there, so.
We don't have a foul reading schedule yet, so we have plenty of time.
You were going to say something, Mel?
I was just going to say, I mean, it looks pretty reasonable. I recognize that, you know, we're definitely not Northfield, we're definitely not Red Wing. But like you say, they are in the area. And it's just interesting to see how different all of the statistics are on these different cities anyway.
Sure.
So I think it's a good blend that'll give us a decent idea.
And that's what we want. I mean, like I said, we're not trying, I'm not trying to put my, my finger, and Linda's not putting her thumb on the scale here. We're trying to make sure that's, it's appropriate because we don't know what it's going to look like yet, so. But if you do have something that pops up in the next week or so, maybe let Linda know because then we can let the, the folks at David Drowned, they can add it into their, their request, information request. So that's all I've got for that.
Thank you, Tim. There's no new business administrators report?
Sure, glad to go through that with you. So, you know, good news, bad news. Legislature, as we've been following today, the word came out, special session. The, the leadership says they're going to need a special session to finish. Not surprised anyone who's been following it. They did, committee, the senate committee did reject an amendment regarding that zoning changes. So similar to last year, ran into a lot of opposition from the League of Minnesota Cities, the folks of the metro. So it's not going to proceed this year, at least unless they throw in something really late at the game, which you never know, it could happen too. But I suspect that that will probably get laid by the wayside there. EDA, we had a good EDA meeting last week, really excited. We have this good set of trainings, Chamber of Commerce today. We talked about it with the chamber, let them know. These are free trainings. There's potential for light lunch, I think, is that what you said, Ian?
Light refreshment.
Light refreshment.
Dinner time.
All right, dinner time, sorry. But, so, I mean, we're bringing these to the folks in the business community for free. So anyone who's interested in that developing a business plan, starting a business, marketing, funding a business, or cash flow, these are going to be paid for by the rev group and the city, the EDA. So we're, we're very happy to have them and we're hosting them locally at the, at the site downtown here at the studio. So, you know, which is a nice, nice location. Recently attended the city administrators conference. You know, I don't think a lot of those folks have been, well, it's interesting because you have the, you kind of have a lot of the folks who've been in the field for a while who are retiring, who they don't care as much because they're retiring. And then you have folks who haven't been through a budget crisis yet in Minnesota. So they started in the last ten years, and so they haven't seen the, when the LGA does get cut. And I think, you know, you're seeing with schools especially, you know, and you're going to see with cities. So it's, it's interesting talking to people who are like, oh, no, they're not going to cut anything. Well, guess what? You know, including your package is the budget run that the senate passed, which is a three point one percent cut to the LGA, which is about forty thousand dollars for Casson. So that may not come to pass through the, the conference committee, but it may. So I think some of the, my colleagues may not be prepared for things being passed down to them. The state legislature is saying, hey, we're broke. We're going to pass things down to the county, especially on the human services side. We're going to pass things down to the school, and we're going to pass things down to the cities to, to try and fund. So, yeah, the word today was that sounds like probably a special session, LGA cuts, and then a sales tax moratorium. So pretty legislatively heavy here. We talked about a lot of the P and Z things I've already got mentioned here. And then I did include a few things in your packet. Like I said, you've got that run of the LGA estimates from the legislature. And then the capacity auction this year came in extremely high. So that will impact the profitability of the electric utility in the calendar year twenty-five, twenty-six. You know, we do have some capacity we've purchased. This was a new year because they, they did a slated curve, but also they had a guaranteed minimum price. So definitely something we're continuing to track. Capacity's getting more expensive. We've been working with Excel to try and motivate them to allow us to do some of the projects that we've talked about. However, you know, they, they are, they're not moving real fast. And we're just going to try and keep working with them to, to get that done so that we can have our own capacity needs met. We don't have to worry about that cost going forward, so. Also, I want to highlight, the audit will be on June eighteenth. And we're not planning on having it five o'clock. We're planning on having it during the regular meeting, unless there's too much content, and then we'll have it early. But I apologize, I, I think we put it out the last meeting, but I should have reminded folks and, because I know you're busy and I want to make sure your calendars, you know, we don't, I know that date's moved a little bit. We were going to have it on the twenty-eighth. The auditors both have conflicts that night to present. So we'd still like to have them present. So it will be June eighteenth. That will be at six P M. So, just so everyone's aware. I don't want them, I want you to be able to plan your, your schedules out, so. That's what I've got for tonight.
Thank you, Tim. Up next, engineers report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. In your council packet is a resolution to approve plans and specification ordering, or excuse me, the advertisement for bids for our Sixteenth Street Northwest project. In your council packet, I'll have to pull it open here, is the construction plans. And there is also the advertisement for bids, that is the advertising that go to the newspapers, so. Big plan set because it's a transportation-related state aid project, so I won't go through it all tonight, but I'll jump to sheet, I think it's fifty-two. Just give you a quick overview. Yeah, fifty-two would be a good sheet to jump to. So you're going to keep scrolling. So our transportation plans end up with a lot of information on them, a lot of standard detail plates. We have fifty-two. What this project is, is essentially, you see the left side of your sheet there is Eighth Street or Congress Road twenty-one. And that gray hatching there includes concrete turn lanes to extend Sixteenth Street from what we call the dump road or Eighth Street. And you can see that's on the east side there. On the west side of Eighth Street, we also have a turn lane going to the west. That is to accommodate the subdivision talk today. Talked about today, Oscar Meadows second with Mr. Bigelow there. So in our discussions, we've agreed to stub that turn lane out there. So he's going to pick up from there and build Sixteenth Street to the west as we develop west of the dump road and kind of hook into his subdivision. So that will be a nice contiguous Sixteenth Street. So from there, we're going to construct Sixteenth Street. I'm going east, I'm going kind of backwards from where it's kind of built now to the east towards our Sixteenth Street roundabout. Essentially having the same size roadway has been stubbed out on the south side of Quick Trip there. As we go east, we will have a driveway into the Dodge County facility. I'm on sheet fifty-three there. And then a couple of driveways to the gas substation on sheet fifty-four. And then you can see a trail coming up on sheet fifty-four there that's coming up from the Shrum subdivision. So now that we're going to build the road and accommodate the trail on the north side, we're going to have a pedestrian flasher system there and perpetuate that trail to the south. Shrum has agreed to build trails within his facility. So he'll hook into kind of our tail of a trail to the south. And then he's going to build a trail to our north park. So we'll have a contiguous trail from Sixteenth Street right in the backside of our park along the northwest corner of the park, kind of by that Abbey Lane area. So probably versus myself, kind of looked at how we continue that through the park. But I think that's going to be something that'll be a couple of years from now, discussed at the council level. And then the east side of the right-hand sheet of sheet fifty-four is Quick Trip there. So you can see a Quick Trip located there. So we're going to connect into the, where we stubbed Sixteenth Street. Then I'll jump to one more sheet fifty-five. Shows, shows, excuse me, the right turn lane off of Dodge County twenty-one. We're going to have to relocate that trail to the south some to kind of get it in there. And then fifty-six shows the southbound right turn lane to go west of Dodge County twenty-one there to, again, to accommodate Bigelow home's Sixteenth Street. So unless you want to go any deeper than that, weren't happy to. But really, from an engineering standpoint, a pretty straightforward project. To wrap up Sixteenth Street, a reminder we did get a million and a half from MnDOT to construct this project. It's probably going to be just a little over two million. We knew that. We were going to advance our MSAs dollars as past council actually kind of pay for whatever the bids were going to be over that one and a half million, what we were expecting. We will have some costs that are ineligible, including the southbound turn lane there shown on fifty-six, which we discussed previously at the council level, that, that's not going to be stated eligible for this project. And then some of our lighting's not going to be eligible. So don't have exact numbers now with all stuff that we were expecting at a staff level anyway, so. Get a majority of the project paid for by the state and finish up our Sixteenth Street. And I know even some of my coworkers that live in northwest Casson said, get that dang thing done. So they're looking, looking at a little shortstop, shortcut to get through the school there, so. So I think it'll be a great project to get, get done. So with that said, there's a resolution to approve the plans in your council packet. And the advertisement for bids that's going, the newspaper's in there. We got the plans pretty well wrapped up. Maybe a couple of small changes with our final MnDOT review, but not expecting a lot. So from a council perspective, what we show here is what we're going to be going with. So I'll answer any questions you may have and answer for consideration of the resolutions, so.
A question. The gravel road the county has in there, is that?
That's going to come out as part of the project, yep.
Okay.
So we talked that through with the county. You can see it if you look at the sheets, there's kind of a hashed area.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to verify.
So we worked with their staff because they were in a little bit of a bind because they thought Sixteenth Street was going to be built. They got money for the reuse facility there, the, yeah, reuse facility. So they were bidding it, or building it, excuse me, and they thought a road was going to be done. It wasn't. So we said, hey, you're going to have to build a gravel road. So they went ahead and built the gravel road. And we told them, build to the south the road. We'll get our road in there, keep access to you, then we'll take it out as we come back and do our turf restoration. So that's included in the project. And then also, we've kind of dug a pond or started, starting to dig, digging a pond as part of the project. We're going to include that as, as our project, so. The other thing, I guess I would note, that trail, it does go to the south to Shrum. We've talked that over with staff level. We will have to take to the Dodge County Board a formal easement to get that trail on their property. But obviously, with the county, we've worked well on all other trail projects and whatnot. So staff's supportive of it, so that will be going to the county board at some point so we can get that trail built, so. We've worked with staff on the location, so. I think that's about all the highlights that I have, or if there are any other questions, happy to answer them.
All right, well, thank you, Brandon.
Do you feel like the bidding environment is still pretty good for this sort of thing? I know we have a couple of contractors in town doing projects that might be attracted to them.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's, it's been a... Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's, it's been a change in a good way from our perspective on contractor availability, so. Yeah, just talking about the projects that are still available, ready to rock, so. It's pretty straightforward from a project's perspective, I was asked by Councilmember Christensen if we can get this thing done by school, I'm not sure, but something I may consider, may talk to the contractor, say, hey, if I put a tighter timeline and bring it back to the council, are we not going to, you know, cause a huge cost increase? You know, usually shrink schedule, contractors don't like it, they, they increase their price, but if they say, no, go ahead, we're going to get it done anyway, or if you push us, we'll get it done, maybe that's a conversation we have, but I'll have that conversation and may or may not be back to, to see what that looks like, so. Obviously, probably not interested in spending another half million or something to get it done quickly, so. All things that I'll work out on my end, and bring it back if it's, if it's appropriate, so. It is scheduled to be regardless done by, I think the date's in there, I think it's fall of this year, it's either November fifteenth, so, what time the paving plant closes up, so, will be done this fall. So again, it's pretty straightforward, not a lot of complexity from a contractor, engineering, construction perspective, so.
Perfect. If there's no other questions or discussion, I would take a motion to approve the resolution approving the plans and ordering the advertisement for bids.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Paul. Motion to have a second?
Second. Oh, sorry, Mel.
Thank you, Mel.
Yeah, one other thing, are you guys both there? Sorry.
Go ahead.
One other thing to add, we did get notice that we got approved for our funding through the MnDOT LPP program for TH-57 improvements from Eleventh up to the Sixteenth Street roundabout, so we asked them for 1.2 million to widen that road into a center three lane, similar to the section to the south, so we did get awarded that, again, 1.2 million. That's ultimately helped facilitate development of that farm field there, that we've seen phase one of that application come in, likely see phase two here moving forward, so. It's ultimately a MnDOT requirement for us to develop, with the developers, to put that center turn lane in, so we got them to essentially pay for it, so. I think it's great to see that development, I think that area's going to really take off in there, and then you're going to see that farm field there filled in pretty quickly, so.